Joseph, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
President Kushner.
President.
Counselor Bean.
Present.
Counselor Boishman.
Present.
Counselor Beazall.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Donley.
Counselor Green.
Present.
Counselor Joseph.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Tran.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for George Watts, who is a city councillor for the city of Fitchburg, as well as city solicitor. Thank you. I'd also like to mention that, to commemorate Mr. Watts, the mayor had the Coast Guard flag and purple buns hung from Old City Hall in his honor both today and tomorrow. That said, if there are no objections, I would ask for a report from the Appointments Committee, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met earlier this evening. There was one new appointment for the Energy Commission Board, Andrew Cordio of John Fitch Highway, term to expire April 1st, 2019. We also had five new permanent reserve police officers. The vote on those were unanimous.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Appointments Committee reports. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the swearing-in? I'd like to ask the five reserve police officers being sworn in this evening to please approach the center well for your swearing-in. Amy, can I go to you for records? I'll do that after the public... No, I'll do this right afterwards.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me to take a note. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As permanent reserve police officer.
As permanent reserve police officer.
For the city of Fitchburg.
For the city of Fitchburg.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Walter. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Just whisper right in the thing in your ear before you get to open the comment for two minutes. Do you wish to have a chance to speak?
Also like to recognize that Andrew Cordio, member of the Energy Commission, was here this evening as well. Thank you, Andrew Cordio. Moving on to the agenda, public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are addressing a public hearing petition, you will have an opportunity to speak at that time. So, in other words, for those of you wishing to speak about West Fitchburg and the zoning change, you'll have an opportunity later in this evening's agenda. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda which you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Ms. Bernard.
Yes, Chairman Bernard, Director of the Fitchburg Library. I'm speaking to order 194-2016 to appropriate $58,480 to the library capital building renovation in charge against available funds, and asking for a suspension of the rules on this because it needs to be acted on by July 15th, so there wouldn't be time before your next meeting. This is to repair some of the HVAC units in the library.
Motion for suspension of 194-16.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 194-16. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those opposed? Rules suspended. Item is...
Will 194-16 be granted?
Second.
I have a motion and second to grant 194-16. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Rule is suspended. Item is...
Will 194-16 be granted?
Second.
I have a motion and second to grant 194-16. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. It's unanimous. Thank you, Chairman. Anyone else wishing to speak? Dr. Alfredson? Good evening. Please approach the center table. If you could introduce yourself by name and address for the record, that would be helpful.
My name is Knut Alfredson. I live at 1461 Main Street in Leominster, and I own two properties on Main Street in Fitchburg and have been in practice in medicine in Fitchburg for the past 35 years. I am speaking in favor of petition 196 submitted by myself and over 400 co-signers, and in favor of petition 197 submitted by Ken Posco. There are two important points in petition 196. I believe that it is now abundantly clear that there is major opposition to the single lane conversion. On June 10th, Dr. Radovanic and I announced that we were collecting signatures to shelve the single lane project. Within just three weeks, we have collected over 400 signatures. People came to our office not just to sign the petition, but to ask how they could become actively involved. For the first time, I met Ken Posco, John Benoit, Louis Chamberlain, Lou and Sue Rufiange, and others, who actually gathered the great majority of the signatures. On May 17th, the vote to convert Main Street from two lanes to one lane occurred at the city council meeting after hearing the audience speak on the issue. According to a Sentinel newspaper article the next day, opinions expressed by the public at the meeting were unanimously in favor of converting to one lane. Given the tremendous controversy about this project, the question must be asked, how did only proponents of the one-lane project know about the agenda? Clearly, the great majority of the city councillors did not have an opportunity to hear the entire voice of the community affected by converting to a single lane. Those of us opposed to one lane would have been here had we known that a vote would be taken place. Improving communication between the city council and the residents of Fitchburg is actually my most important point. The second point is that petition 196 is that the single lane will decrease access to one of the most important parts of the city. Decreased access will negatively impact the economic development. It will hurt many businesses to the point that they will need to move. Most importantly, critical fire, ambulance, and police services will be impeded, especially during rush hours when schools are in session, or when utility work or motor vehicle accidents occur. Traffic will stop when cars stall, or when drivers try to back into a parking place or pull out into a single-lane street. So please reconsider the vote of May 17th and hold a hearing where Ken Posco and myself and I'm sure many others can present other ideas on how to advance the economic development of Fitchburg. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Alfredson. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Dr. Radovanic.
Hi, my name is Ed Radovanic. I own a dental practice on Main Street in Fitchburg. I've been at that location for 29 years. My residence is in Webster, Mass. My primary concern, along with Dr. Alfredson's, at my particular location at 637 Main, is the parking situation. Myself, I have many handicap patients who arrive at my office in wheelchairs. The parking there is hazardous at best right now, and under the proposal that I've seen with angled parking and the loss of the parking spaces on the south side of Main Street in front of the Public Library, in front of the Fay Club, and in front of the Verizon Building, that's going to basically eliminate half the parking in that area in front of my office. So there will be more competition for these patients to find suitable parking. Dr. Alfredson experiences the same thing, as he has a large number of wheelchair patients. And with a one-lane traffic flow, it's just going to... The congestion will be much, much worse. I know I've had discussions with Michael as far as regarding changing the lights at the end of Main Street. I just think that the volume of traffic that comes up Main Street during late afternoon and early evening, it's congested now. With only one lane, I see no other option for a lot of people to start diverting in back of Elm Street or finding any other ways around Main Street, and I just think that's going to make another problem for other residents of the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Radovanic. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Mr. Iascha. Good evening.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Christopher Iascha. I'm speaking on behalf of Pride this evening. Pride is a downtown business organization that has been focusing on this issue for over five years. Many of the issues that have been brought up have been vetted over multiple public meetings we've had. We've had many opportunities for individuals in the community to come up and hear from Andrew Leonard, who's done exhaustive research on many of the valid issues that have been brought up. And I can say from the input that we've had from the community that the overwhelming support, overwhelmingly there has been support for this particular proposal. I understand there's challenges and everybody has their concerns about their individual business, but Main Street is currently broken. It needs to be fixed, and this is a catalyst for change, for a transformation for downtown Main Street. Main Street is currently a cut-through. That's what it's being utilized for at this particular stage. I own three businesses in downtown Main Street, and I would love to have some of this traffic stop and frequent my businesses, but they don't. They're getting through Main Street as quick as they possibly can, and it's a safety hazard. I've watched people trying to cross Main Street traffic. I had an opportunity to speak with a new business owner across the street from Destari this past week, and his first comment was, coming into here, he feels like he's taking his life in his hands crossing Main Street. There needs to be a transformation. I'm hearing no alternative plans for suggestions for a transformation for Main Street, and I support the one-lane Main Street and the overwhelming support that we've heard from our Pride Board of Directors meetings and every meeting that we've had has been in support of this. So I'd really like to continue the course, make a catalyst for change in this particular vote, and stay the course that we've already gone through. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Iascha. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
My name is Glenn Fosser. I own a building at the Morin Square, 8 Moonenberg Street, and in complete respect of the opponents of this particular petition, I would speak in favor of it. Also, on the Board of Directors for Pride, this has been some time in the making. The proposal was properly voted by the council, and I think they voted in the best interest of the city. Main Street is a cross-through or a highway, if we want to call it that currently. There's plenty of capability for emergency vehicles, and anyone else who wants to go west without going up Main Street at a particular warp speed, they can go over to Route 12 and they can continue on west from there. Basically, the evidence that I bring tonight, and I believe in evidence-based discussion, is, one, all traffic solutions. Number two, on the list of five ways to calm traffic beyond putting a police officer in the road, is make the road narrower. The bike lane would do exactly that. Of the 10 best America's new bike lanes of 2015, the number-one location was Cambridge, Massachusetts, our neighbor's just to the east of us. I think we're at a critical time for the city of Fitchburg to move forward. I think we've seen great evidence of the narrowing that's taken place just currently in the 100 and 200 block of Main Street. This is just a natural progression to improvement of that area. So I, for one, would be in support of this petition, of keeping the original vote.
Thank you, Mr. Fosser. Good evening.
Good evening, councillors. My name's Louis Chamberlain. I live at 141 Plymouth Street in Fitchburg. I want to speak and to ask you to reconsider 196-2016. I'm a Fitchburg cab driver. I work for City Cab, who's been a business in the town, in the city since 1961. DeBramante's bought it. And Lisa DeBramante, the owner now, the owner of Twin City Cab. You've got about 30 cab drivers, 30 vehicles. These businesses provide service to people to and from the train station, to and from work, to and from school, to and from daycares. We do a lot of work. I probably do 27, 28 calls a day. I'm up and down Main Street between 20 and 30 times a day. This is not a good idea. Right now in Main Street, if you look, we have about 15 empty storefronts. Fitchburg Jade's not happy with this. They do a major delivery service. So does Tiki Tiki. They're not thrilled with this. This is not... We need to come up with another plan, maybe put a stop sign somewhere, you know, maybe Maine and Oatman or something, but this isn't going to work. It's going to affect businesses that have been here many years. Twin City Cab's going to be affected. The owner of Twin City Cab, Kim Lynch, she also signed the petition. This is not a good idea. You need to look at all the businesses, not just four people. Four people can't even get anybody on the ballot. You need 50. I'm just asking for you to please reconsider this. You work for all of us. We need to come together and as a community and try to make something work for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Mr. McSheehy. Good evening.
Good evening, councillors. I'd like to speak on 196-216, 197-216. My name's William McSheehy. I live at 250 Mount Vernon Street in Fitchburg. I'm the president of the Historical Society, not speaking for the board, but speaking as the president of the Historical Society and as the vice president of the Fitchburg Cultural Alliance. And I am speaking in favor of the council maintaining the vote that they've already had. Looking at the entire plan, it's much safer to have a one-lane Main Street in that if you're parked on the right-hand side of the street, getting out of your car, obviously, is going to be safer on the left-hand side. There's no doubt about it. It's safer. As far as emergency vehicles going up and down Main Street, I think the people who are in charge of the safety requirements in the city have approved it. They are supporting it, so I think that's an important aspect of why we should be looking at a positive on the one-lane Main Street. The other thing is the process. Watching the whole process, which started more than two years ago, and having the forum at Destari, there was many opportunities for many people to speak on this issue, and there has been many opportunities over the two-year period. And so I'm saying that the council did due diligence on this. You did your homework. You all did your homework. And the day that we had the meet... You had that's the last meeting when you took the vote, you had a debate about what was going to happen to the one-lane Main Street. You had a chance to voice what your concerns were, and who supported it, who didn't, why you did, why you didn't. And then you came to this council table, and for once, as a united front, you stood up and said, "Do it." And you did it for the progress of Fitchburg, and I applaud you for that. I'm asking you not to change your mind now. We know that the two-lane Main Street has been there for 40 years. What's the positive about it? Not much. It's time to try something else. Nike says, "Just do it." That's what I'm saying to you. Just do it.
Thank you, Mr. McSheehy. Mr. Nicholas. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's David Nicholas. I live at 699 Ironhal Farm Road. I also have an office at 625 Main Street. My wife owns property at 625 to 639 Main Street. I'd like to speak really on three different matters. I'll speak about Main Street, first of all. As far as the bike lane is concerned, it gets you from the east to the west side, doesn't get you back from the west side to the east side. So everybody's going to have to either leave the bicycles over on the west side, or they're going to have to alternatively buck the traffic on Boulder Drive if they ride with the traffic, which most will not do. I am for the petition to reconsider. When I first spoke, and I was at a Public Works meeting a year and a half, maybe two years ago, certainly a year ago, I spoke against it. I spoke against it. Counselor Caddy was leading the charge, if you will, and basically said to me, "The goal is to keep traffic off of Main Street. We don't want people driving down Main Street." That is what you said, Joel. And that's not the way to have economic progress in the city of Fitchburg. You'll want as many people on Main Street as you can so you can fill up all the vacant stores. I would also like to speak on 195-216. That's the petition by city solicitor Vincent Pusiteri to amend the code of the city of Fitchburg to require people to come before the city for permits or other processes to have to pay the city solicitor at a rate of $250,000 an hour, or $125,000 an hour, and they're going to be guarantors of services that are going to be provided to the city of Fitchburg. It's going to the Finance Committee, and I would ask that I be provided notice of that when that petition comes up. I have serious questions as to whether it violates state law, let alone the obligations of attorneys that are set forth by the Supreme Judicial Court on conflicts of interest. So I would ask you, when you refer that to the committee, that I be provided information about when that committee meeting is going to be held, so I can speak in full on that. And if you would permit me to speak about the hearing that's before you, or the hearings plural, I would like to go to George Watts' wake, so I'm going to leave immediately after I finish here. All I want to say is, I would vote in favor of the petition as somebody that was president of youth soccer, coached youth soccer, and was active in youth soccer for over 10 years in the city of Fitchburg. It's a needed economic development. This council has three opportunities to vote on matters that are going to advance the business interest in the city of Fitchburg and make the city of Fitchburg sound more business-friendly as opposed to less business-friendly. And on all three of those, you have an opportunity to act appropriately. I would ask you to reject the... Excuse me. Permit the petition for rehearing to go forward. Consider whether or not the application by Attorney Pusiteri for payment of legal fees by developers and others coming before the city is appropriate, and then finally, I've made my voice known on the hearing. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Mr. Cody.
Yes, my name is Peter Cody. I live on Claritin Street here in Fitchburg. I own a business at 310 Main Street. It's going to... It's not open yet, but I've been in business in the city since '09. 310 Main Street. When I heard that this had passed through the council a few weeks ago, several weeks ago I heard about it, I thought it was a great idea. I thought this was going to enhance the city of Fitchburg. I'm glad I came to the city of Fitchburg. What's been going on downtown Fitchburg right now has not worked for 30 years. Look at the city. It looks like Beirut down there. If you guys are going to do something to make positive change, this is the time to do it, and I'm asking the council not to change, and don't do anything. Just keep it the one way like you voted. Don't go back on your decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Ms. Squalia?
Sam Squalia. Speaking on one-lane Main, I'd like to read excerpt from my ledge to the editor regarding the vote that was taken in May. Just, "Right now, it's not comfortable to walk or bike downtown being so close to the fast-moving traffic, especially for those that are older or have physical limitations trying to cross the road. This proposal would not only slow down the traffic, which is needed for safety and commerce, but it would add a three-foot buffer zone to the parked cars, so you'd increase your comfort in parking and getting out of your car. It would add 20 feet, or it would create 20 feet of clear road width to allow emergency vehicles to safely pass through. It would add a bike lane, which keeps the bikes off our sidewalks, which is unsafe and uncomfortable and not legal, while increasing the available travel options to those without vehicles. It adds loading zones for businesses to avoid the double parking issues. It shortens crosswalks, which increase pedestrian safety by adding large planters with more landscaping entries. It eliminates the passing lane of traffic that we currently have, which greatly increases pedestrian safety. It enhances the sidewalks by adding width and distance from traveling cars, increasing the comfort of patrons and business residents traveling by foot. And it does all of this at an estimated cost of $10,000 to $15,000 in reversible line painting that the DPW has in the budget. In addition, by promoting the complete streets policy here, we open ourselves up for grants starting at $50,000 and stepping up to $750,000, as noted by Steve Curry, our Board of Health Director." So, in closing, I would urge the council to not reverse your decision before it's even had a chance to be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Squalia. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Mr. Richards.
Hi, my name is Josiah Richards. I live at my new address, 199 Fisher Road. I actually... I would like the city council to stick to your decision in not supporting petition I think that the... You know, I actively sought a home that was closer to downtown. In a perfect world, I would have found something really right downtown, because I really love the idea of reducing the traffic speed on Main Street and making it more conducive to businesses. I really think it's a model that would help support downtown businesses, pedestrian-friendly, cyclist-friendly, and, you know, there's a population right here, there's a segment of the population that's not here because we're not on a bus route, who walk, and I think downtown Fitchburg is not conducive to pedestrian safety. As Chris pointed out, crossing at right there, Blossom, you know, and Cushing, is really treacherous, and that whole intersection is a crazy cluster by itself. But, you know, the left lane is used as a passing lane, there's no... You know, clock's... Speed's been clocked at 50 miles an hour. I think a one-lane Main Street with the buffer lane to get out of your car, and the bike lane, and the planters are all just traffic calming. The current traffic volume is already a one-lane traffic volume, is what I'm trying to say. There have been traffic studies done, due diligence has been done. I really think to come in at this point with opposition to it, you should have just come along a lot further behind, you know, back in the past. So I really urge the council to support your decision, and just let's move forward with some progress and change downtown that supports safety and small business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none?
One more. One more.
Sir?
Thank you. If I meant... If I sound direct, I mean today, maybe insulting, but it's, in my estimation, it's accurate. I'm Ken Posco. I've been in downtown as a resident, as a businessman, as a CPA, and as a building owner for probably 35 years, and I used to see Joel walking the beat. So I think we have the same amount of years and experience, but different perspectives. So I read a quote in the newspaper that Joel said. He said, "It's about safety." Okay, you said that, fine, that's good. I agree with that. So it was strange, though, that as this thing proceeded along for a few years, of course, I was uninformed, I don't mean anything downtown, it ended up with the Public Works Committee. Why would it end up in the Public Works Committee, Joel? I understand Joel is the chairman. To me, it would have been sensible to go to public safety. It's a public safety issue. So I have no idea why that came about. I agree with traffic calming. I agree with you on that. But I don't believe there are any other solutions that were discussed. And the bike lanes, you've got to be kidding me. You've got to be kidding me. First of all, the down-and-out people on Main Street that travel on the sidewalk are going to continue to travel on the sidewalk. In my many years downtown, I've never seen anyone, any serious biker, with a helmet and a multi-speed cycle on Main Street. So this is not the place to ride your bike if you're somewhat serious.
I was out there yesterday.
Well, that's good. How far'd you go?
Order, this is not an opportunity for conversation, sir. If you've... Your two minutes is elapsed if you could finish your concluding thought.
My concluding thought?
This is a parliament procedure. Maybe just the audience doesn't know, but all those remarks should not be addressed to the council, to the director, to the chair.
Okay.
So we don't get into that.
Okay.
Sir, your concluding thoughts?
Well, I have a lot of evidence here, but let me just say this much. I felt like it was an inside jaw by certain groups in the city that did not do their homework and wanted to push this through as a solution for calming Main Street, and it really... What they really said is, "Make this... Make this work." So this is not the place to ride your bike, if you're somewhat serious.
I was out there yesterday.
Well, that's good. How far'd you go?
This is not an opportunity for conversation, sir. If you, you've, your two minutes is elapsed, if you could finish your concluding thought.
My concluding thought?
This is a parliament procedure. Maybe the, just the audience doesn't know, but all those remarks should not be addressed to council, to the director, to the chair.
Okay.
So we don't get into that.
Okay.
Sir, are you concluding thoughts?
Well, I have a lot of evidence here, but let me just say this much. I felt like it was an inside jaw by certain groups in the city that did not do their homework and wanted to push this through as a solution for calming Main Street, and it really, what they really said is, "Make this, make this work on a plan to make it one lane." So, this is just outrageous, and I can't believe this is actually happening. So I would ask the council to absolutely vote tonight, if you could, and reverse the decision made previously. So please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Posco. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Mr. Dohan? Good evening.
Thank you, Councilors Mark Dohan. I'm with New View Communities at 470 Main Street. We have 31 apartments up above. I support the council's decision for us to have tenants and residents there. It's really important for the traffic to be slower. We also counsel a lot of businesses on Main Street, and all of them that we've spoken to have also been in favor of this. Slowing down the traffic is a great idea, and I'd just say two other things about, one, this has been out for a long time, people have had a lot of comments about it, and we've also had an experiment about it. Last year, when Unitil was doing their construction, Main Street was effectively one-lane for quite some time, and I think the traffic flowed smoothly. So I appreciate the council's careful deliberation on this, and I know that people have already been making plans to go forward with this. If it doesn't work out, we can always redo it. That's why, although we took a lot of time to make sure that it was safe, and we heard from the police department and the fire department to make sure emergency vehicles could go through, ultimately, the council in its wisdom decided just to do it as painting lines, so that if it doesn't work, we can reverse that. But it's time to try something new. We've had 40 years of two ways, of two lanes on Main Street, it's been very fast, and it hasn't encouraged as many businesses as it could, I think, as if we had it in one lane. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dohan. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Mr. Fornier? Good evening.
Good evening. Matt Fornier with Elite Construction, also a property owner and local business owner in the, in the city, and currently have a property on Main Street that we're looking to develop. One of the concerns that we've had over the past years is walkability downtown and how to make those things work and people to feel safe. So I feel like this vote to do the one-lane Main Street is very favorable, favorable for walkability downtown, and to get, you know, the youth to come down in the area and the community to really feel safe on our Main Street. One of the things we aren't able to do right now is even sidewalk sales, because our, you know, our sidewalks are narrower than newer cities. It's one of the challenges we have in the city. We can't modify our downtown too much and make it much slower or provide more parking without looking at the one-lane Main Street. To get bikes off the street and to tie in with some of these other ideas with bike paths and some of the opportunities that we have, it's very favorable to work that through. You know, line painting is simple, so for traffic studies and things like that, as for our safety vehicles, we're not going to make that a situation, because we're not blocking off that bike lane to say, "A car can't go over there, or a safety vehicle can't go through." Sam touched upon the fact that you're creating more space for parking, which is going to be easier for people parking cars and drivers, so it's less concern. So, you know, there's back and forth on all arguments, but the bottom line is, it's an opportunity to try something different in the city. You know, two lanes hasn't been working for years, and our Main Streets have been getting worse. It's not because of, you know, us saying, you know, not enough traffic or speeding traffic is the reason that we're not having businesses down there, but it hasn't helped, you know? So let's look at an opportunity and go with the decision that we talked about earlier. Everybody's had opportunities to look at it hard, you know, long, and what's wrong with trying something new? Not everything has to be so fast, so.
Thank you, Mr. Fornier. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. My name's Jenna David. I live at 5 Fulton Street in Pittsburgh. I work at, on Broad Street as well. It's a little less than two miles back and forth. I drive my car. Want to know why? I don't feel safe in any other mode to get there, to be quite honest. I did walk partially from Maine to my home not too long ago during the Civic Days event. Not too bad, but stuff was directed differently. So for me, this is an opportunity to, if we install the bike lane, to actually use my bicycle. And I'm lucky, because I don't live on all the hills that everybody else tends to, it's relatively flat. So I am here to say that I support your original decision, and I hope that you keep with that. And it's really about making downtown accessible for all modes of transportation and all people, not just people in cars. People that may have disabilities or limitations, people that live in the college area as well. We can get younger people, people from the college to feel safer going downtown. That's a start. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda.
I don't need.
Oh, I apologize.
One more?
Two more.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Good evening.
Oh, good evening. My name is Debbie Jocelyn, 3 Village Crossing. I've been downtown for 30 years, first at the old Safety Fund Bank, and now at Edward Jones Investments. I watch what goes on downtown all the time, and I have to ask, and this is my question to all of you, how much time have any of you spent downtown? Anybody spent a half hour down there? And what were you doing? I didn't see you walking around, so what were you doing downtown?
Lived there for eight years.
Where?
470 Main Street.
Oh, so you live where Michael lives?
I used to.
Okay, and so you--
Counselors, it's not an opportunity, ma'am, you have to direct your comments to me.
Because it was you, it was you that I had spoken to, if you remember, or emailed a couple of years ago, when we had the woman who fell on the sidewalk. Do you remember that? And you remember why she fell? Because of all the raised bricks. She wasn't the first one. I know the city has probably been sued many times, but she broke her arm, her phone, her glasses. We had to call 911 to get her up off the ground. So, maybe those of you who haven't spent any time, and I mean time, walking around downtown, maybe that's what you ought to do, because I think you're going to be very, very surprised at the state number one of the sidewalks. I'm totally against what this one-lane main. Let's take care of the problems that are there before we start spending money on something we don't know is even going to work. Thank you.
Thank you. One further comment? Good evening.
My name is Shirley Rickman. I live at 26 School Street. I used to live on Oliver Street, so I'm very familiar with downtown. And I've lived in Pittsburgh since 2000. I've seen a lot of what I would call harebrained schemes, a lot of money spent to change things down there, and I don't think you have it yet. I think you need to put some businesses, spend your money there first, before you try to improve it and make it acceptable for people. There's no one down there walking on the streets right now, and there's nothing down there. The few businesses that you have down there, you're alienating them. You're going to drive them away. And you're, I think you are, and I think you're doing something that's destructive to business, and I think it's going to be more expensive in the long run to you, because you're going to have to beef up or widen Elm Street, because there's nothing else close to there that, for people to go from one end of Main Street to the other, except going down Main Street. And I travel it every day between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock, and all I see are loiterers and people down there that are not spending any money, not doing anything, they're not shoppers. So I'm very against this, and I hope you will reconsider it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Good evening.
Hi, Bob Corb. I live at 26 School Street.
I'm sorry, sir, can you repeat your name one more time?
Yes, Bob Corb, 26 School Street.
Thank you.
And read in the paper that it said it would cost up to $20,000 to try the plan, and then about another 20 if it doesn't work, and it probably will fail. Instead of spending the $40,000 or so on other ways to slow down traffic on Main Street, it would be worth looking at other solutions. And my other thought on this is that as you constrict the traffic down to one lane, people are going to feel congestion, and they're going to want to avoid it. And so I think it's going to make people want to avoid downtown Pittsburgh. I don't see it's going to help.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. Also like to welcome Counsel Tran and Counsel Donnelly. Counsel Donnelly, can you please provide a report from the committee on records?
Can you give the records, and then can it be in order?
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the committee on records. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Communications from his honor, the mayor. We have two letters this evening. One is a letter of appointment regarding election workers. The second letter of appointment is for Richard Librotary to the Airport Commission.
Would you please move it to the appointments committee?
I have a motion and second to send the two letters of appointment to the Appointments Committee. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is unanimous. We have one communication from department heads this evening. It was placed at your seats, counselors, this evening. It was addressed to Michael Kishmerich, council president, regarding City Council Petition 106, 2016, Plan Development District Rezoning Request. Dear Councilor Kishmerich, I regret I will be traveling out of town on July 5th, and thus cannot attend that evening's city council session where you will hold a public hearing regarding Petition 106, 2016, for a planned development district rezoning request by Steve Marsden relative to his property on Westminster Hill Road. As a result, I wish to submit this letter to the city council to formally offer my thoughts on merits of the proposal as Economic Development Director of the city of Pittsburgh. Overall, Pittsburgh is quite fortunate to have an opportunity to strengthen our commercial tax base while also building upon commercial recreation to foster additional tourism. The proximity of this, of the subject site to Route 2, Great Wolf Lodge, and the new MBTA commuter rail station now under construction in West Pittsburgh were key factors in Pittsburgh becoming a desirable location for the proposed game-on Pittsburgh Soccer Sports Facility. Through this project, Pittsburgh will be able to build our brand in the minds of families who wish to visit our city for recreation tournaments. Further, once here, those visitors will spend dollars in our local businesses as well as well, which strengthens our local economy. As your board gives careful consideration to this rezoning request, I trust the council will recognize the economic development significance of this special opportunity which has come before us. Respectfully, Mary Jo Bohart, Economic Development Director. Moving on to the agenda.
Counsel President. I was wondering if it's possible, I noticed that there's quite a few people here on a couple of the petitions in the petition section, and if those petitions are going to be sent to their respective committees, I was wondering if it would be possible to take petitions out of order and make a motion to send the petitions to their respective committees.
Second what?
I have a motion and second to take petitions out of order and send to their respective committees. Speaking to the motion, Counsel Gina Tally?
No.
No. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is unanimous. Their respective petitions, 195, 16, up through and including 199, 16, will be sent to their respective committees.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, we'll resume to the council agenda. Finance Committee, Counsel Gina Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council met last Tuesday and took up the following, 181, 16, an order transferring $12,000 from Water Personal Services to Water Personal Services overtime. That was adopted. 182, 16, transferring of $5,000 from airport expenses to accounts as follows, $4,400 to airport personal services overtime, and $600 to airport personal services. That was not adopted. 189, 16, transferring $6,600 from airport expenses to accounts as follows, $6,000 to airport personal services overtime, and $600 to airport personal services. That was adopted. 183, 16, transferring $21,000 to cemetery master plan Phase 2 from DPW Capital Oak Hill Road Bridge. That was adopted. 184, 16, transferring $40,000 to DPW Administration Engineering Expenses, document scanning from accounts as follows, traffic signals expenses, $8,000, highway general expenses, $74.57, municipal garage expenses, $17,000, Capital Oak Hill Bridge, Oak Hill Road Bridge, $74.53. That was adopted. 190, 16, transfer, order that consistent with MGL Chapter 43, Section 30, there being hereby is appropriated the sum of $30,000, same be charged against available funds, and credited to DPW Highway General Expenses, right-of-way takings for the purpose of taking temporary and permanent easements for the South Street Elementary School Right-of-Way Improvement Project. That was adopted. And lastly, 191, 16, an order appropriating $100,000 to stabilization fund and charging against available funds.
Counselors, 190, 16 will require a separate vote, requiring two-thirds vote to pass. Excluding 190, 16. I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report excluding 190, 16. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Move 190, 16 be granted?
No, I was--
Oh, speaking to the motion, I apologize. Counsel Joseph, would you--
I missed the meeting last week, but I just would think that 184, 16, with the $8,000 for traffic signal expenses, that even though we don't have that $8,000 spent right at this moment, I would think that they could stockpile $8,000 worth of equipment that would keep our traffic signals working, maybe next year. Excuse me?
Counsel Joseph, moving forward, if you wouldn't mind, just speaking a little bit louder so those in the, those in the audience can hear.
So I would just think that with the traffic signal expenses having problems, that we would be looking at other ways to spend that money to stockpile parts as opposed to putting it into the scanner, because we always seem to have traffic signal problems, and I would just, would have thought that maybe they could have stockpiled something on that one.
Counsel Gina Tally.
Counsel Joseph's concerns were addressed at the committee hearing with Commissioner Laxo, who stated that the document scanning request has been requested for almost a decade now. There are, I believe he said, 80,000 pages of documents the DPW has stored in a closet. Valuable information fills with our sewer line systems, our water systems, our road systems, and they've been asking to modernize an electronic scan, these documents. The $8,000 was raised, because we know we have traffic signal issues. He stated at the meeting that since they moved it over to his department, they spent about $80-plus thousand on traffic signal repairs. They repaired several intersections, and they have enough money in the budget for next fiscal year, or this fiscal year, I might add, to continue the maintenance and improve additional intersections, which he believes will be a little less expensive than it was the previous year, because there was a big backlog. So they took a lot of the backlog away. So that's why the committee voted favorably to transfer this money for a private organization to scan these 80,000 pages, and they're a company that's used throughout the state for a lot of municipalities, and in keeping in touch with the open, the records laws of the state. It's time that we have backup copies electronically and not have them stashed away in a closet. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to adopt the Finance Committee report excluding 190, 16. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous.
Move 190, 16 be adopted?
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt 190, 16. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Motion carries. Before we resume to the Public Safety Committee, just furthering Counsel Beazall's point earlier, for those who are coming to speak to One Lane Main Street or other petitions that were sent to their respective committees, no action, no further action will be taken on those, so rest assured, if you desire to leave at this time, there will be, there will be no action taken. That said--
Are you saying that petitions 196 to 197, 16 were sent to the council as a whole?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And through you, Mr. Chairman, by class, the city clerk, when is the next time the council as a whole plans on meeting?
A meeting has not yet been scheduled. I'll be working with the city clerk to schedule such a meeting and make it public.
Thank you.
Moving on, Public Safety Committee oral report, Counsel Green.
We had four petitions--
We had four petitions in front of us. Petition 84-16, Sam Gander, for Class 2 Car Dealer License at 339 River Street. That was granted. Petition 85-2016, Councillor Dean Tran, to provide the proper cautionary signage at the corner and intersection of Rollstone Road and Brittany Lane. That was given leave to withdraw. Petition 188-2016, Yusuf Haikic, doing business as Auto Service LLC, 91 Laurel Street, to expand its dealership by adding an additional 70 spaces for cars. That was, that's gonna be held in committee. Petition 79-2016, Councillor Marcus Deena Tally and James Alexander, to place either stop signs or yield signs at the following two intersections, Briarwood Drive and Parker Hill Drive and Parker Hill Drive and Colonial, and Colony Road. That was being, that's also being held in committee.
Will the Public Safety Committee report be granted?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Public Safety Committee oral report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous, the motion carries. Public Works Committee, Councillor Caddy.
Public Works Committee, commit on June 28th. There were six petitions before us. First petition, 207, 2015, Ken Mattson, President of Mattson Homes, to accept Downey Circle located within Parker Hill subdivision as a public way. That was held in committee. 185, 2016, Councillor Mike Kishmerich, to install a crosswalk on Pleasant Street near the, its intersection with High Street. That was granted. Petition 186, 2016, Councillor Jody Joseph and David Dudo, to properly reconstruct Fallula Street to Benson Street. That was held in committee.
Caddy, could you please speak a little bit more loudly?
Sure.
Thank you.
281, 2015, Councillor Michael Kishmerich, to increase the height of a city-owned fence on Blossom Street between the intersection of Elm and Mechanic Streets. That was held in committee. 187, 2016, Councillor Amy Green, to install a berm at 20 Linden Street. That was granted. And last, 192, 2016, Councillor Amy Green, to request a fence sections that are missing on Wall, to request the fence sections that are missing on Walnut Street be replaced. That was granted.
Will the Public Works Committee report be accepted?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Public Works Committee report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you for the unanimous, very loudly. We'll next move on to the Planning Board report on Petition 106, 2016.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Councillor Boishman.
If we're gonna be discussing these petitions right here, I'm asking that we speak out loud on us so we all can hear. It's very hard to hear with these things and it's very hard to hear you over there or over here.
Councillor Boishman, I will, I will ask the council, the council to speak as loudly as, as possible within their comfort zone. Councillor Deena Tally.
Sir President, would it behoove us to start with the hearings and not do the Planning Board recommendations first? Because aren't they connected to the hearings?
Typically, we'd, we'd read the, the planning, the report, just to provide context before then moving into the hearings.
So we're not approving the, we're accepting the?
This is simply just a report. Yes, correct.
Okay.
So no action, no pursuant action will be taken until we act on the hearings.
I just wanted that clarified. Thank you.
So Planning Board Report on Petitions 106, 2016 and 107, 2016, regarding 106, 16, recommend in favor, 5-0, however recommends a zoning overlay district with commercial recreation use allowable by Planning Board Special Permits. And then reference Petition 107, 2016, recommend against by a vote of five to zero. Then move to hearings. Well, first here, Petition 106, 2016, Steve Marsden, President, SM Development, Inc., to amend the Fitchburg zoning ordinance by adopting a bylaw which would insert a new section, 181, 8431, approved, approved planned development districts, Westminster Hill Road Commercial Recreational Districts. Declare the hearing open. I'd ask person or persons representing the petition this evening to please come forward. Kindly introduce yourself or all of you by name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Steve Marsden from SM Development, Fitchburg.
My name's Greg Roy, Ducharme Dillis. We're also joined with, I wanted to introduce to, joined with the two gentlemen from Game On Soccer, who would be the operators of facility, Peter San Germano and Peter Hoy, who are also with us this evening.
If you so wish, they can join you at the center table if you find that necessary.
So I, I have a brief presentation, if that's acceptable.
Absolutely.
I also have a board, a presentation board. I'm not sure the, the council's pleasure with that. If there's a place I could set that up that would be convenient, I'm happy to do so.
Perhaps right to your, your right, to the left of the table here, it would be wonderful. Mr. Roy, can you just clarify your address too for the record?
Yes, my business address is 1092 Main Street in Bolton, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could you have them locate that so it's visible to the crowd as well?
I'll put it right here.
Next to Councillor Caddy.
Councillors, we could maybe put it in the back corner if that's amenable to?
Right here.
To the council. You could put it by? Sorry to play musical chairs with you. Councillor Joseph, you have a front row seat?
I know.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. Are these mics working or do I just need to talk loud?
They are working, they, but they, they're for broadcast TV.
All, all the above, I guess. Talk loud and they're working, okay. Again, Greg Roy, Ducharme Dillis, thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the, of the council. We appreciate your time this evening. I wanted to give you a quick presentation on the proposal at hand. And then I'm, I'm sure there's, there's other people that would like to be heard this evening. As, as mentioned in the petition, the proposal involves the construction of 10 outdoor soccer fields. Four would be artificial turf. The four westerlymost fields that are in the rectangle, rectangular configuration would be artificial turf. The balance of the six fields remaining would be natural turf. All the turf, all the fields would be lighted. The, there is also 100,000 square foot indoor facility that would house four fields. Inside, there would also be some accessory uses in that, in that facility. All these are summarized in the petition, but some of those uses are restaurants, restaurant use, some medical type support uses to support the athletic complex. And some pro shop type gift store for the patrons of the facility. There would also be some outbuildings for restrooms and such located near the, a few of the, a few of the fields in the remote locations. So I wanted to be real, real brief this evening. I want to talk a little bit about how we're proposing to access the facility and some of the other design considerations that honestly have not quite yet, have not been determined in detail yet because we've not been past this process. As you know, this evening, we're here before you for the zoning change pursuant to the planned development district. And this concept plan was developed based on the idea that traffic would be accessing the site from the south. We would not propose through traffic through Westminster Hill Road. We were proposed to terminate the Westminster Hill Road from the north so that we would not allow vehicles accessing the facility to come from the north through, through that area. Lighting, as I mentioned, would be, would be through the use of modern LED field lights. If, if this process was, was successful, we, we are fully understanding of the fact that we will need to provide the Planning Board through the special permit process with full photometric calculations to document that we don't have light pollution, either dark sky or, or towards the abutting, abutting areas. We're also proposing approximately five to 550 parking spaces on the, on the concept plan. They're positioned at various places to accommodate the patrons of the, of the facility. Water and sewer, we propose to connect to the municipal water and sewer facilities. We've, we've had some initial discussions with both of those departments. The, the design details need to be worked out in the design phase of this project, but the proposal is to extend sewer and to extend municipal water. We know that there is a pressure issue up there, so we're aware of that. We're already working to, with the water department to determine ways that we can, we can mitigate that concern. I wanted to end tonight by just saying that, just, just so that everybody in the room is aware, I'm sure, I'm sure the council is, but a, a zoning change, if, if it were the, the wish of the board, would, would, would still require that this, that the applicant and the project go before the Planning Board for a special permit. The Planning Board would have fairly broad powers, discretionary powers, to review the project subject to the performance standards of your, of your zoning ordinance. We're gonna have to overcome things such as lighting, traffic, noise. We understand that and we're prepared to provide that information at that time. Also, we would be before the Conservation Commission. There's some wetlands on site, so we would, we would be working with the commission through the order conditions process. Would you like to say anything?
No, I think you covered it. Thank you, Greg.
I'm gonna be brief and I'd be happy to take any questions or?
Questions from councillors? Councillor Green?
Yes, my question would be, how exactly do you propose and where stopping of the traffic coming from Westminster Hill Road?
Come around and?
Sure.
Councillor Joseph, maybe turn your mic just so that?
Sure. So I'd be remiss if I didn't say we don't have the final design details worked out yet, but our proposal would be, if you're familiar with this, there's a gate there. So we'd be doing it in the vicinity of the gate. So we would be, you know, somewhere in this area, past those, just past those last couple houses. And we're not sure the details of that. We'd like to work with the, with the highway department, the DPW, to figure out what the best way to, to do that dead end would be. We want to discourage people from parking there and using the facility, but we want to encourage the use of, if, if we need an emergency vehicle connection through that, through that area, we want to make sure we have that maintained. So it's a little bit of a balancing act.
And would there be precautionary or proper signage further down the road, letting people know that it's not a cut through, it's not a thorough way, you can't get to the soccer fields this way, stop, do not enter, residents only, to, to help ease the tension that this is causing with the abutters? Because I think it's, I mean, their concern is that there's going to be traffic, you know, flowing right by their house, getting to the fields because it's a soccer mom in a van and she's 10 minutes late and they're gonna get there however means they need to.
Yes, we do anticipate signage, not just at the site, but further down?
Okay.
At, at the, at the intersections in question.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Boishman?
If they happen to park up there where the gate is, are you gonna tow them?
Now, that's a good question. I, I don't have the answer to that, to that question, but I, Steve?
Yeah, when we spoke with the, the police chief and the fire chief, certainly that's an enforcement issue and either we would do it or they would, but they would not be allowed to park there. And we would discourage it from within the facility as well to make people understand that that's not the way to access the site and, and do everything that we can from our side to help with that.
Councillor Beazell.
Thank you. I guess through Council President to the city solicitor. So I saw a whole laundry list of things that the Planning Board is eventually gonna request of them. Are we accepting that laundry list or are we just, our job tonight is to decide whether or not we want this rezoned so that it further goes to planning and the, and the Conservation Commission and through, because it still has to be vetted through a slew of people, correct?
Absolutely. You're, you're being asked to approve an overlay district.
Okay.
Then anyone who wanted to operate in that district would have to go for the site plan, the special permit and site plan review process, which would, I think from attending the Planning Board meeting, certainly include that list that you're discussing, but is not necessarily even limited to that list. So I think they tried to provide some clarity that those are some of the primary concerns that they were thinking of when they put that list together.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Caddy.
I'm gonna ask you three questions so you can take your time answering them.
Yes, sir.
How are you gonna regulate the sound from the fields, the lighting and the traffic? How the traffic coming in industrial road?
I'll take them in reverse order if you, if you?
If you can repeat them, because you've got a louder voice than I do.
Sure. Councillor's questions were related to sound mitigation, lighting mitigation and traffic management issues. I'll just take them in reverse order, just because that's what my brain is working this evening. First of all, we don't have specific traffic answers for you this evening, and that's because we're, we're just not into the, into the hard design phase. But a, the project proponent would be, be required to by, by the Planning Board language that is in this petition, but also even if it wasn't required on a, on a site this large, we will be doing a detailed traffic study, not only of this area, but of the, of the surrounding areas, so probably all the way out to Route 2 to determine how traffic circulation is gonna be, is gonna be handled by the, by the surrounding streets. And a traffic consultant will make recommendations in terms of the adequacy of the ways, if, are there things that we need to do by way of turning or intersection improvements and that kind of thing? Also, they'll make, they'll make projections as to how many vehicle trips per day, per hour, that kind of thing. And there'll be much, much more detailed information during the design phase of that. The, the Planning Board has also indicated that the, that the city would be seeking to peer review that work with their own traffic review consultant at the cost of the applicant. So traffic is a concern, we understand that, and, and we will be working through, using those professionals to make sure that that is mitigated. Lighting, an earlier iteration of this proposal had, had particularly these fields rotated a little bit closer to the, to the parking, to the abutting properties, excuse me. We, we've tried to work this plan a little bit in, in this short process since the 14th of June, when we first went to the Planning Board to present it, to try to mitigate some of these concerns. But in short, the lighting that were proposed, and, and I'm not, again, a lighting expert, but the lighting that's proposed is, is modern LED lighting. It's dark sky compliant and it has a, a full cutoff feature where if you're standing a short distance behind the fixture, you do not, you really, you cannot see from the, from the luminance. So we'll be using state-of-the-art lighting fixtures to achieve that. The parking lot lighting would be very similar. We'd have dark sky compliant lighting. We'd have full cutoff fixtures in compliance with, with, with regulations as, as they exist. And we would be required to provide the Planning Board and the city with an overall photometrics plan to document that we have dark sky compliance and that we don't have spillage on the, over the, over the property lines. Noise reduction, we propose to do that in a couple ways. One is just by shifting the, the fields, like, like I've mentioned. The second way would be as we're developing the grading plan, to look to see if we could incorporate some burns into the, into the grading plan that would, that would achieve some, some sound reduction. Also through the use of landscaping and just trying to preserve trees. That, that's, that's how we're, we're looking to do that. But again, we're not into the hard design phase of this project yet. All those details, that the councilmen referenced, were raised as significant issues in the Planning Board meeting, and we understand that they're significant issues and we will be to the Planning Board with detailed analysis surrounding them.
Councillor Caddy, you'll say?
I've heard people worried about their, their wells in that area. Tell me how, what response, and the blasting. Tell me how, what response, and the blasting. What responsibility would be on the developers should someone's well go bad, or if the blasting caused some problems on people's properties?
Yeah, I mean, it's a good question. There are things you can do, we can, and again, not into the, we're not even sure the extent of the blasting that we're going to have at this point, we're not even sure where. First of all, domestic and fire protection for this site would be from municipal source. We do propose to do irrigation from an onsite well. We're not even sure, we can't even tell you today where that well would be, to really make any, to be able to even start to begin to talk about what kind of impact that would be. But we would be certainly amenable to looking at ways, if there's some hydrogeologic data that would support putting some test wells in at the property line, so that we can test whether we have hydraulic connections out there between our, the well that we're using for irrigation and the abutting wells. Another project I've worked with, we've worked with the abutters to monitor their actual well, to make sure that the water levels aren't dropping. In terms of assurances, I don't, I just can't tell you today what assurances, but I mean, it's certainly in the planning board's purview under the, through the special permit process to condition whatever they see fit that might be necessary to protect the public benefit, protect the public in the area. So, I'm just not sure what those mitigating things might be, but there's certainly things that can, that the planning board has the authority to do.
Councillor Dina Tally?
I'm hearing a lot of "I don't knows," and the reason for that is because these gentlemen are not going to go forward with any of these things unless they have the zoning changed, because why would they waste their time and money if the zoning's not changed? So, that's why they don't know. Our business here tonight is to decide whether we should change the zoning. The planning board's recommendation says, keep it rural residential, but also attach on there the use for commercial recreational. This is a private piece of property. This gentleman sitting over here, under the confines of the existing zoning code, can do whatever he wants for residential. He can build subdivisions, which would still require water and sewer hookup. All the concerns raised tonight are valid, and they would be addressed if that were to take place. Point I'm trying to make is, is even if we were to not do this tonight, there's nothing stopping this gentleman from developing in that area, putting hundreds of homes, if you will. All the questions that people have will still be present whether we do this or not. And like any other subdivision or any other development, there is an extensive bureaucratic process we put people through, specifically to address the concerns the residents have raised, which are absolutely valid. They have to go through the planning board to get a, do a site plan review, and there are going to be several conditions the planning board will put on them in order to get the special permit. They have to go through the conservation commission for wetland protection and forestry issues and topological studies. They'd have to go through zoning, they have to go through public safety, public works. They still have to go through all these channels, whether we do this tonight or not, and if we do do it, that all still exists. So that's why this gentleman keeps saying he doesn't have any ideas yet, firm ideas, because they're not going to spend the time doing all that legwork if we're not going to give them what they want. But if we don't give them what they want, they can go do something else. There's nothing stopping them. This is going to be so vetted, it's going to be vetted out of its eyeballs with all these different organizations, and the council tonight can make sure that when we make a decision later on, that we stress to these agencies what they must impose upon these, this developer, to assuage the concerns of the residents. I think the viewing public at home and the audience needs to hear, and I won't read the whole thing, but it's important that it be read, what the planning board recommended. They stated, and again, this is just the preliminary, that the applicant must demonstrate to the board satisfaction that there will be adequate buffering and screening for adjacent areas to mitigate issues such as, but not limited to, spill-over lighting and sound from the outdoor rec facility. Access to the proposed commercial site is solely from southwest via industrial road or inadequate alternative. Access to the site shall not be allowed from the northeast via Westminster Hill Road, except for emergency access only. The applicant shall assess the water distribution system in the area, and as directed by the water department, provide improvements to public water supply systems to ensure adequate water pressure for fire and domestic flows. They shall submit a traffic impact study and cover the city's cost of a third-party peer review. Applicant may be required to make off-site improvements, as may be reasonably recommended in the study by the third-party reviewer or determined by the planning board. A parking plan that addresses the recreational planned development needs and overflow parking must be submitted to the board for review and approval. No parking associated with commercial recreation, planned development use shall be permitted on Westminster Hill Road, Victoria Lane, or industrial road. The applicant may be required to make other off-site improvements to mitigate the impact of this development, not limited to improvements to industrial and Westminster Hill Road. Evaluation and recommended improvements to the Monichus at pump station and other utilities, and providing an adequate turnaround at Easterly Terminus of Westminster Hill Road. They further go on to say that they have to assess the impact on private wells through a hydrological study, and planned irrigation use, and use the best management practices, and then subject to a satisfactory review by the police, traffic division, and fire department, and other city departments as needed. Once all those things are done, the planning board will then make a decision on what to do, whether to issue the license or not. And the planning board's not going to pass this if those aren't met, same as any other development. And I'm sure there are people here that are skeptical, no matter what happens, no matter what is said, no matter what the contingencies are, and that's fine, but from where I sit, this is going to be vetted and reviewed through the nose. And for people who want the studies done now, this gentleman's not going to invest his time and money into doing studies when he's not going to get the zoning change he seeks. He's got to get the zoning change first to do all these studies. So, I just wanted to point out some of this information for people, not just in the room, but outside of them, because I've had a lot of people give me misinformation about, I had one individual ask me yesterday, there's been no vetting, no one's going to watch this, they're going to get away with murder, they're going to do whatever they want. They probably don't know much about the city of Fitchburg, because we have a knack for making things hard for commercial and industrial development, as evidenced by our tax base, which is 78% homes. So, and which, by the way, is another reason why people's tax bills go up every year. People's tax bills go up every year because there's nothing to take the money away from them to cover the base. You've got no business growth in this city, none. So the residents keep flipping the bill, plain and simple. I'll get into more later when we actually take a vote, I'll speak more on the merits of this proposal and the concerns, because I can't stress enough, because I know when these things come forward, I'm going to hear it, no matter what I say, no matter what, how I feel, no matter what time I've took for this, not everybody's going to be happy. So, as a councillor at large, I have to assess the impact of the city at large, and I just wanted to make these statements to assuage the viewing public that this is not going to be done in a vacuum, this is not going to be done with no public input. All of these meetings that these guys have to go through are going to be all public meetings, there's going to be several of them, more than they can probably stomach, but if they're that serious about it, they're going to keep going with it. This is going to be vetted through the nose. So, I just wanted to make that clear, and stress one final time, the concerns are valid, and they have to be addressed. And I think so far, the city has taken steps preliminarily, preliminary steps, to assuage those concerns. If this city said to the residents of that neighborhood, "We don't care what you think, we don't care how you feel, we're going to bypass conservation commission, we're going to bypass the DPW, we're going to bypass water and sewer, we're going to bypass fire and police, we're going to bypass planning, zoning," then I think there'd be an argument to make that the city doesn't care, and that we're just doing this for the dollar. Thank you.
Councillor Joseph?
Where is the nearest sewer hookup and water, and which way are you coming in?
Could you speak up, please?
I can say it. Question was nearest sewer and water hookup, and it's down here. There's a dry hydrant system on Victoria Lane. Okay, so these folks are on wells, but there's a dry hydrant system that has to be charged by the fire truck in the event of a fire. So they hook up, and they have to place a pumper truck here, so we'd be extending it from further down on Russell Drive up into the development. And from what we understood, we've had preliminary discussions with the water department. There's a pressure issue there, so that's why we can't have, you know, there's not enough pressure to fight a fire here from just live pressure. The water department is looking at various options around this area for switching pressure districts or creating another high-high, super-high pressure district. So there's a few different scenarios with the way that could go, and we're just not sure exactly how that's going to turn out. But there's enough quantity, there's just not enough pressure. So part of the proposal, whatever, however we end up here, will certainly involve some sort of pressure-boosting station, because we just need it to get adequate pressure.
Sewer?
And sewer, Steve, you might be able to speak on the sewer a little bit?
At the other end of Victoria.
Down here?
Yep.
Up here? Yeah, so it's, and it's all, it's uphill here, so it's just an extension of the wastewater pipeline system.
Councillor Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Why Fitchburg? How did you guys figure out that this is where I wanted to go?
So, it's not my cup of tea, gentlemen, enough.
Is that something you'd like to address?
This is Peter San Germano from Game On Soccer.
Could you please give the address for your business, too?
My address, 51 Burbank Road, Sutton, Massachusetts. Why Fitchburg? The population in the 30-mile radius works for it. The amenities in the town, what Great Wolf Lodge is a big plus, and the Route 2 and the carter coming through gives enough, we feel enough amount of traffic to be able to get to our facility.
They've already built one of these facilities down in Lancaster, right? What is the difference between that facility and the one that you'll be building?
It's Pappas Fields, right? Is it Pappas Fields?
No, the Maze.
Maze Fields, sorry, Maze Fields. So Maze Fields, all outdoor, they don't have an indoor component, they don't have a year round, and they, their fields, the amount of fields they have can't handle larger tournaments, and again, they'll have a few more fields than we do, but we'll actually combine with them. So, other than having improved parking, I mean, as far as tournaments go in the summer, we'll be similar, we'll have the concessions outside and the bathrooms, but we have the indoor component, so we go year-round.
And how many fields will you have indoors?
We'll have four indoor fields.
Any further questions or comments from councillors? I'll just further Councillor Dina Tally's point earlier in comparing this, you know, right now, there's been questions about, you know, how are we dotting the i's, or where are we crossing t's? At this juncture, we're really talking about, do we want to put a piece of paper on the desk? We're not at the point of, you know, of vetting and really discussing, you know, the most intricate matters of how this is, you know, going to disrupt or not the neighborhood around, or how it'll impact other areas, even wastewater or water at this point. So, this is step one of many more to come, and I think this is a worthy and worthwhile discussion to have. That said, thank you, gentlemen, thank you very much. At this point, I'll ask if there's anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the petition. Mr. Hurley, good evening.
Michael Hurley, member of the planning board, Fitchburg.
Mr. Hurley, if you could please approach the center table. We also have your address as well.
I'm Mr. Andrew Rangel, Fitchburg, Mass. There's a petition before the council tonight for a zoning amendment, and the planning board has sent a list, the laundry list, as we refer to it tonight, a list of recommendations to go along with that petition. Is that going to be considered when the council votes on this, as an amendment, or at any time, or is this going to be passed back to the planning board, and we'll talk about it more at that time? Next, my question is, is the city council going to consider the recommendations from the planning board before they vote on this petition tonight? Thanks.
Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Good evening. Could you please approach the center table, identify yourself by name and address for the record? And I'll just add, excuse me, I apologize before you begin, just to anyone speaking this evening with regards to the hearing, just out of fairness to everyone, I know there's a lot of people who wish to speak this evening, we're going to restrict, as we did earlier this evening, everyone to two minutes speaking, I'll be strictly adhering to that and timing folks as we go. So, I apologize if and when I have to interrupt, just to notify people that your two minutes has elapsed, and at that point, just please finish your final thought, so the next person can speak. That said, I apologize for interrupting.
That's okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Keck, I live at 214 Sanborn Street, which is off of Westminster Hill Road, and I just want you to vote in favor of this zoning change, because more houses is going to bring way more traffic than we ever dreamed of. I grew up on Sanborn Street, my grandfather worked in the mills, so my family's been there for a long time, and now, since Parker Hill or Downey Circle and all your nice, pretty new houses up there, those people all come down Westminster Hill Road, they take a sharp right down Sanborn, if they can't make it, they back up onto my lawn, they knock over my rock wall, and then they keep driving. So personally, this affects me, and soccer up there is going to be great for the city, I think, and we just, we don't need anymore.
This is not an opportunity for open dialogue.
We don't need any more houses, is my point, so anything, almost anything, is better than more houses at the top of the hill. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Ma'am, please come, in favor, yes. Seeing none, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? Ma'am, please come forward. And again, I'll just remind folks, this is, all comments should be directed at me as president of the council, and this is not an opportunity for open dialogue or questions of other councillors or the audience here. That's it, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Ginny Gerton, I live at 165 Central Ave Extension, and I'm an abutter to the property in question. I have received no notices to any of this. I understand that there were only a few notices sent out, though there are hundreds of us who will be adversely affected. In 1996, the redevelopment authority and Michael Nava had a similar idea for Fitchburg's economic growth, with rezoning rural residential to industrial, suggesting new businesses would come, bringing jobs and prosperity. That didn't turn out very well, as only a fraction of the land was sold very cheaply, and left, I believe, only two businesses added to the park. Now, 20 years later, our neighbors and our community of West Fitchburg is faced with another save-the-city idea, and we have serious concerns that this project is not well researched, has the potential to ruin our neighborhoods, destroy our quality of life, congest our roadways, affect our wells, those being just a few of our fears. Our property values, the drain on police and emergency people, this is not just a West Fitchburg problem. This should be a wake-up call to any neighborhood in the city of Fitchburg that feels that their properties are safe, secure, and free from questionable development. There were hundreds of us who protested in 96, and the city was divided, many people calling us jerks and anti-progressive, concerned only about our backyards, that is not the case. We are all watching the inner-city neighborhoods crumble and decay, a main street which is nothing short of depressing. West Fitchburg is most concerned about the rezoning and commercial redevelopment, the rumor going around town that the council has already accepted this project, and that we have no recourse, that it's a done deal. Have any of you walked into any of these affected neighborhoods? Have any of you walked over to Victoria Lane, or Central Ave Extension, or Westminster Hill Road? Can you imagine the traffic? Can you imagine the shortcuts through places like Cascade Street? Yeah, while, you know, the area is zoned rural residential, it is hilly terrain, it is wetland, it is loaded with wildlife, we've seen this. Deer, moose, bear, coyote, and bald eagles. We are concerned about runoff, displacement of wildlife, the amount of blasting that will occur, and many of us understand the topography and all the ledge. Am I done?
Please conclude your thought.
Thank you.
I assume I have someone else wishing to speak in opposition to the petition this evening? Sir, good evening.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Ian Catlow, 85 Victoria Lane. I'm going to steal the easel here for a moment, if I may. In the interest of full disclosure... We, in the interest of full disclosure, I didn't come up with this just as some harebrained scheme. I am an engineer, a professional engineer. I'm sorry, I can't. If you stand up, I'm sure you can see it. But I do a lot of the same work that my colleague at DeCharm and Dills does, except I typically represent municipal clients. I live in the Victoria Lane neighborhood here, so this project is a local concern to me. All the at-large counselors are aware of my concerns, you received an email from me today stating them, as well as the mayor and Mr. Caddy. I think, you know, when you look at this plan, it's shrouded back, and I get it, you know, the detail is sketchy at this time at best, because they don't want to invest a lot of money. I agree with Counselor Dean Natale about that. Where we disagree is that this zoning change sets the wheels in motion without hardly any dialogue for a significant change to the neighborhood. And if you think about it, the purpose of zoning regulations is to foster planned community growth, where complementary land uses can be located adjacent to each other, and land conditions are well-suited to the allowable uses. My plan differs from this plan in that it shows topography on here, and I've got to point this out to people, because these houses down here on Victoria Lane are a good twenty feet below these fields here, and that's at the bottom of the field. If you look at the topography of this site, and we've all been to a soccer field, we know it's flat, you don't play on a hill, there's a sixty-foot cut into this hill required from one side of this field to the other. It's an amazing amount of earthwork, an amazing amount of earthwork, that's going to involve countless truck trips in and out of the site. You know, the comments that I submitted for record earlier today document a ballpark estimate of how many truck trips we'd be needing. Thank you, I'll wrap up soon. But, you know, I ask that, as you ponder this change in zoning, you really need to think about, is there a better place for this? Has there been an adequate public process? And there hasn't. You know, in similar communities where I represent municipal clients.
Cut you off now?
I, two seconds.
One second.
Where I represent municipal clients, we've gone through a dozen meetings and several charrettes to discuss a zoning change like this. This is a developer-instigated change, and it needs more daylight.
Sir, thank you for your comments. The clerk has also not yet received any comments, so if you could please forward those to other I or her, it would be appreciated. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Ma'am, please.
You first.
Good evening.
Hello. I'm Suzanne Wentworth. I live at 1215 Westminster Hill Road. First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak about this. I just want to say, I think this is a huge decision before you, and I hope that it's really done thoughtfully, because it not only affects the city, but the residents of the city, the people who live in this city. And I believe a lot of consideration should be given to this. When I think of this project, I think of, like, Trader Joe's, or, you know, Walmart, which I never go to, or, you know, a big box store. They have certain requirements. They're going to check, is it the right demographic? Is it the right financial base? But mostly, is it the right location? You will find none of these large venue, large population, large traffic situations plunked into the middle of a quiet neighborhood. They're always easy on, easy off. Where do you find Lowe's? Where do you find Home Depot? Where do you find all these stores? Where do you find the soccer fields in Lancaster? On Route seventy. The proposed fields in Sutton, which I have some paperwork here, they're being put directly onto Route one forty-six. So, once again, it's highway on, highway off, not smack in the middle of the neighborhood. I just think it's the wrong location. It may be the right project for the town, and I'm not going to argue that. I understand that it is tax revenue without a burden on the school system, I do understand that. And so, it's very tempting to say, yes, let's do it, because of, you know, the financial gains, but the gains at what loss? Because there are going to be losses, and it's the loss to this community. It is the loss to this neighborhood, it's the loss to the good neighborhoods in Fitchburg, which recently I just moved into. I bought an abandoned house that had sat empty for almost a year, paid the town back sixty-nine thousand dollars in back taxes, which was the reason the house was empty. And the last thing in the universe I want to see is this, because I believe it's the inappropriate location for it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening.
Richard, you have to say, I live at 726 Westminster Street. I'm the closest abut to Industrial Road on Westminster Street. The reason I oppose this is on the basis, not a business basis, but on the basis of traffic, and also environmental, and I can look over there and tell you, the two lower ones on the left will never be put in there, because that's the headwaters of a brook that comes right down through there. And that had been, always been addressed before, when they tried to develop it. And then, even after that, after they developed the housing thing. Many people hear me, I walk this thing six to seven days a week, I ride my bike up there, and I've been doing this for years and years. I've spent approximately sixty-five years in that location, and I'm seventy-seven years old. We, there were promises made the last time, this is like deja vu, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Well, this never happens. Prime example, the last property that was developed up there, I think Ruthia did it, and now Harvey owns it. They had permit to recycle shingles. All of a sudden, traffic went from maybe fifteen to twenty trucks a day, two hundred. I asked somebody, oh, there were more permits given to us, as an abutter, we were never notified. So, this is why I'm really skeptical, you know, they're going to do anything. Victoria Lane, I walk there every day. There were two pot, not, there weren't potholes, sinkholes, two feet by two feet by two feet deep. Complained about them. After three years, one got fixed, the other one's a hundred fifty yards away from it, it still isn't there. I personally filled it with p-stone this past fall. Now, when they put the houses up there, again, somebody in this room said to me, we held their feet to the floor, we put in this sidewalk, and have never done a damn thing to do it since. I personally, every year, have to blow all the stuff off in the spring, cut the brush, it's never, it's never plowed in the wintertime, for my safety. Now, I drive my car, that's from the bottom of the hill up into the thing, up into the park, so I could, I don't have to be accosted by all the trucks.
Sir, your time is expired.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Dirk Burrows, I live at 15 Pearl Road in Ashburnham, and I own a business on Industrial, Industrial Road. While I can certainly understand the residents in the surrounding area's concerns, and there are a lot, I actually bring the concerns of what local, local business would be like. I have serious concerns about thousands of cars per week coming through, or people, or pedestrians coming through, in an industrial environment. We have, our small organization has three to five heavy trucks coming in, the shingle reprocessing is growing, and they've got over two hundred trucks coming in on a weekly basis. The truth is, is that this is a serious safety concern, if we're going to have, you know, a lot of traffic on an industrial road. And this is not atypical, this is, this is not what anyone would want to plan, going through an industrial park to get to a soccer field. I don't know how this is going to economically benefit the residents, and I certainly don't believe it's going to economically benefit the businesses that are in this area. In fact, you know, in our plans to expand our business, add employment in the area, I've got to give consideration, is this the right place to do that? I've been a strong advocate of Fitchburg, Fitchburg's been a real advocate for business. We were very skeptical, and at the time, Mayor Milot really reached out to us, brought us in, and Fitchburg's really lived up to the promise of being business-friendly, and I'd like them to keep that promise by being business-friendly and considering the businesses that'll be affected in that area with that kind of traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the petition?
Okay, hearing none.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Beth Romano, I live at 161 Victoria Lane. And while I'm not completely against the idea of this venture, I am vehemently opposed to the placement, as Suzanne said, of this business in the middle of a residential area. Mr. Marsden purchased this land knowing that it was zoned residentially, and we all purchased our homes that abut this land, knowing full well that it was zoned residentially. When I was looking to move to a single-family home, I chose to stay in Fitchburg. I chose the area in which I currently reside because of its location in a rural residential area, away from traffic, noise, and the congestion of downtown, but still close enough to amenities that a small city like Fitchburg can offer. There were other places I could have chosen, but I chose, as my neighbors have done, to stay in Fitchburg. Despite the negative attitudes of others towards our city, despite the numbers of residents and businesses leaving the city, we chose to stay here in Fitchburg. I understand that people believe this business would generate jobs, tax revenue, and visitors to the city of Fitchburg. However, there are a number of people who are negatively impacted by this same business. As the proposed plan states, traffic is estimated to increase in the area and include ten thousand to fifteen thousand vehicles per week, all traveling on Routes thirty-one and two A, which, if anyone's driven through the Waits Corner intersection, it is a very congested area, especially at rush hour time, or times of heavy traffic. I would hope that MassDOT was consulted regarding the increase in traffic on the state routes, and be interested in when and if the traffic study is conducted, when those results would be available to us to review. Please do not discount the opinions, feelings, and concerns of the residents before you tonight regarding this proposal. We are all here because we care, as do you, about our city, and for this reason, I respectfully request that you postpone this vote until further information is available on the issues of concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the petition?
Move the hearing close.
No, we have someone. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Karen Savone, it's Karen with a C, just in case anyone was writing it down. I live up on seventy-seven Victoria Lane, I'm a brand-new resident, I just moved in about ten months ago. A little surprised, and I'm so involved, so, being a new resident here. I, too, am not so much against the type of project that the city is looking at right now, but I do question the location of the project. Being a new resident to Victoria Lane, first of all, it was very hard even finding Victoria Lane when we were looking at houses, even my realtor and I got lost getting there a few times. So, I can just question how that location is going to impact new visitors coming into the area, who don't know the area? How that location would be able to handle the large scale of visitors coming into the area? One of the presentations have told us that they would expect ten thousand visitors a week, and fifteen thousand visitors per special events, of both youth and adult visitors, and that's just on a winter basis. They were not able to provide us the amount of people that would be expected in that area during the summer, spring, and fall time. So, I really do question the location of it, the access to that area. Is it really the right place to be putting such a big venture of that size, around so many residential homes with one-road access, as it's being proposed? With the business being located right there, I do question the safety. I know, as much as we want to say, there will be signs proposed for people not to walk or park in those roads, there will be people walking, there will be parking areas that are supposed to. I think, and anyone has gone to any other areas where there are soccer fields, or any type of youth or adult programs, such as these being proposed today, you will see that people disregard those kind of signs. So, I do think, are we prepared to meet the demands of a proposed site, or project, in a site of this area? Is the city ready to be able to meet those demands in that site? Because I know, although Game On will probably be able to handle what's going on in their private facility with security, what about the streets and everything else surrounding the facility? As a new resident, I chose that location, knowing that there will be perhaps some houses being built out there. I had no problem with that. I do love my home, I do love my site, I do have other environmental and safety concerns, which I know will be addressed later on, and I appreciate that. But I do ask you to think about the location that is being put in, and how it's going to impact both the city and the residents around it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the petition?
Hi, my name is Rachel Catlow, and I live at eighty-five Victoria Lane.
Good evening.
Some of the concerns, I have many concerns, as the other residents do, but the ones I wanted to focus on were what it would like to be like to live in this neighborhood, with all of these soccer fields kind of having games during the day. Right now, the residents of Victoria Lane, we have pretty close proximity to Monty Tech, which you can't quite see on that map down there, and we can hear some of the games going on at night, but I can imagine what that's going to be like, to have ten fields at much closer proximity, up on a hill where it kind of creates an amphitheater to carry the sound to our location. One of the nice things about the neighborhood is it's a pretty quiet neighborhood, and I would rather have residential, you know, area up there than have a bunch of games and listening to whistles blowing and announcements being made. Also, my concern is that the facility is proposed to be open for twelve to sixteen hours a day, which means that, you know, worst-case scenario, it'd be open from eight in the morning until midnight, or six in the morning to ten at night, which I think is a kind of a long time and a lot of noise to be, to listening to. Also, the lights that would be required to illuminate the field, you know, are going to be up on poles, probably fifty feet tall, which are, you know, even more elevated than the homes, because of the topography over there, and I really question if they can reduce light pollution to the point where we're not going to have any kind of impact on our homes. Also, the visual screening of the fields, I mean, right now, you can see from the map, there are a lot of deciduous trees in the area, there's not too many evergreens, most of the evergreens are focused in the north, but right where our neighborhood ends, it's a lot, you know, mostly deciduous. So, what's going to happen in the fall, and in the winter, and even in the spring, when the leaf cover is off, and we're getting that, you know, that sound is even more amplified to our homes? You know, our children are playing in the backyard and listening to all this noise, not to mention the impact of the traffic and everything else happening into the neighborhood. And finally, I'm just kind of curious, like, you know, this project is really being pushed as this big economic, you know, benefit to the community, but how much tax revenue is really going to be generated from this? And you have a facility that's two miles from Route Two, four miles from downtown. Are people really going to leave the soccer games and go, and go shopping downtown afterwards? Are they going to hit the highway and go home? That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the petition?
Good evening. My name is Ian Kigoro, and I'm on twenty Victoria Lane.
Good evening.
Good evening. One of the reasons I moved into the neighborhood is because, like one of the people said, is because of, it's a residential community, it's very quiet, it's very nice, we have young children, I'm one of the younger parents coming up, and we enjoy to take things back to the beginning, where kids could play safely outside. Bringing in this traffic coming on Victoria Lane, we walk around the block, I teach my son, who's five, to ride around the block, we walk around the block, to teach them. Bringing in this traffic, we're taking that away. Having even residential buildings come into, coming into the neighborhood will be a lot better. My kids will have more friends and more kids to play with, which is fine, but bringing in the traffic and the cheers on the soccer fields, and like someone said, it's not that easy come and go. I'm a soccer mom myself, I, my kids play for the Fitchburg Youth Soccer, and I drive them. I do run late sometimes, and you see the hustle that always comes in the morning, I can only imagine, you have fifty, sixty people coming in with all these fields in the neighborhood. So, I'm against bringing this into Victoria, into industrial, into Victoria Lane. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Ashok Ingborani, thirty-four Williamsburg, whatever business is just south of the four fields. I'm not against the proposal, however, I do have a personal concern. I would like to propose that there be a fence north of our property, to prevent people from parking in our parking lot, and just taking a shortcut to the fields. I did not see that as a part of the planning board, which I had discussed with them.
Sir, there'll be an opportunity for such conditions and assurances at a later point throughout the planning that wouldn't come into a zoning discussion, but your point is certainly taken, and I can see Counselor Caddy taking notes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At the conclusion of the public comments. Sir, good evening.
My name is Joseph Fornier. I've lived forty-seven years at twelve sixty-four. In two thousand and six, Mr. Marsden wanted to put a house next In 2006, Mr. Marsden wanted to put a house next to me. That land was declared wetlands by the Conservation Commission and by the state DEP. The water for that wetlands comes from this lot where he wants to build the fields behind my house. That is wetlands, as far as I'm concerned. You act accordingly.
Sir, was it Westminster Hill Road?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
1264, 47 years. I'm old enough to be your great-grandfather.
Bringing me right back down to earth. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Eleanor Leche, 455 Sheldon Road. I recently moved to Fitchburg because I wanted to be in a rural environment, believe it or not. People forget that part of the jewel of Fitchburg is the rural landscape, and people want to live in Fitchburg because of that. I'm all about development, and I'm actually working with the Fitchburg Cultural Alliance and have been in conversation with Mary Jo, economic development person. And I'm all about bringing soccer fields to Fitchburg and whatever we need to do to make it a great place, but like these people said, not in this area. It is, I would not want to rezone any land that is currently rural. I'm going to be working with the city of Fitchburg residents to form a new Protect the Wetlands of Fitchburg organization. So if anyone would like to sign up with me before you leave today, I will have that ready here. I will do everything I can to stop any harm of wetlands in the city of Fitchburg. And so I just wanted to introduce myself. You'll all be seeing me again and again from here on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Mr. Kuchar, good evening.
My name is Attorney Andrew Kuchar. I've been here, I've been sent here as a representative of Jonathan Handler, who could not be here today due to being out of town. I've been asked to read a statement that Mr. Handler has prepared. Council members, first of all, let me be clear on what this project is and is not. This project is not a solution to Fitchburg's economic woes. Secondly, it's not going to make Fitchburg a better place to live. This project is not for the betterment of Fitchburg. Its purpose is to provide a perpetual cash generator for Steve Marsden and Company. It is not a park for all to enjoy. It is not a playground for the entire city to benefit from. It is a pay-to-play, commercial enterprise proposed for the resident, residential neighborhood. This is not acceptable for the residents of West Fitchburg's neighborhood. Zoning laws exist for a reason, the protection of property values. Without an overwhelming provenance of the evidence of citywide benefit, the city should not sacrifice my and all my neighbors' property values. This project is not going to bring people to Fitchburg. It will bring excessive traffic to Waits Corner, an already problematic area. It will bring minivans of kids and coolers full of Gatorade to West Fitchburg to make noise for a period of time and then leave. They are not coming to shop. They are not taking their sweaty kids out to dinner afterwards. They are not going home without even seeing Fitchburg, without ever spending a dime. Which brings me to my final point. Without clear, consistent, fair zoning regulations and enforcement, this city has little or no hope of future development. Without the city's defense of zoning laws, no one will want to invest in Fitchburg, not residents and not businesses. Thank you for your time and consideration. Please contact me at any time. This is important to me, as this has been my home for 31 years. Jonathan Handler, 1296 Westminster Hill Road, Fitchburg, Mass. And councilors, if I can submit a copy of this letter on behalf of Mr. Handler to go on the record.
You may.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I do.
Sir?
My name is Roger Dieterich. I live at 1279 Westminster Hill Road. I have some concerns about the other access, too. They're talking about the security of this area, whether it's going to be all fenced in, because you know people are going to park all up and down there. If they can get through, they're going to. So I have concerns about that access, about the security. They're also bringing in different numbers. You're hearing 10,000 people, 16,000. I wonder how many policemen are going to be up there because of all these people coming in. You know, you bring all those people together, you're going to have problems, so I'm concerned about that. And the fencing, is this facility going to be fenced? And the security of it? I also have many other concerns, but you've already heard them, so I'm not going to repeat myself, about the other concerns, about the traffic, the lighting and everything. This is not a good area for this. We all purchased our homes, I shouldn't say we all. I purchased my home when it was rural residential. I've been up there over 10 years now. And I think everybody that purchased their homes, that was the way the area was. I'm asking you not to change it just for the landowner, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I declare the hearing closed. Councilors, matter is now before you. Mr. Mayor, give you the opportunity to speak.
On that?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to comment and actually provide some documentation, some information relative to one of the ladies in the audience who asked about the tax impact. Council Dina Tally mentioned that, I think you said 72%. I thought it was closer to 82% of our tax base is residential.
Seventy-eight.
It's significant. That's why we have challenges in meeting public services. We cannot demonstrate growth. This is not going to save Fitchburg. Oftentimes, people have said that this is going to save Fitchburg. We don't pretend that this is going to save Fitchburg, but it's a peace. It's a peace moving in the right direction. Here's the tax information. Right now, that property garners $12,400 a year in taxes. That's based on a value of $584,000. With this project, a quarter of a million dollars in taxes will be realized. That's because the property now becomes valued at $8 million, and that's a conservative estimate. We also mentioned, some of these folks mentioned that we're just, they're here to make money. Of course they are. That's what we're all about, all right? We're a free enterprise country, and that's what we do. However, we will negotiate host agreements with Fitchburg School Department, written agreements allowing preferred rates for the use of our fields for all sports, partner with Monty Tech as a resource for work, study, and internship programs, bring visitors to Fitchburg year-round, partner with Great Wolf to secure lodging for the tournament attendees. This is important. This is an economic driver. West Fitchburg has already been zoned with an overlay district for an obvious reason. There's a lot of development that can happen up there, development that helps you. We're going door-to-door when I was campaigning, West Fitchburg, people don't realize, going from West Fitchburg to get to amenities for you folks is a significant, a significant drive through the city, the city to get to where you need to go, if you're going out to John Fitch and places where there are retail. This we want to develop in that area.
We've moved out there for a reason, to recover.
Well, 84,000, 84 acres in that area now, as has been said before, Mr. Marsden could put houses there. That doesn't help you out, doesn't help the city out either, because it costs services. It expends resources.
Our property taxes aren't going down.
This is...
This is not an opportunity for discussion.
It may, it may, if we can bring in commercial, industrial growth. That's what we need to do.
Asking for order.
We had a meeting on Monday. Department of Public Works Commissioner was present, the Water Commission was present, the Chief of the Fire Department, Police Department, Superintendents of Fitchburg Public Schools, Monty Tech, the support for Great Wolf was demonstrated, the Director of the Fitchburg Senior Center, who would also benefit from this project, Athletic Director at Monty Tech, participation by the Athletic Director at Fitchburg Public Schools, the Director of Planning on the city side, the Economic Development Director and a representative for the Conservation Commission. This, this project has been deliberative, it's been thoughtful and thorough. We're going to continue in that, on that track if the council tonight is wise enough to pass this ordinance change, and I hope you will do that. Thank you.
Matter is before the council.
Can I ask you a question? How come we can't ask you guys questions like, do any of you guys have property up there, like, I mean, own a house up there? Do any of you own a house up there, honestly? If you did, would you want that up there?
Sir, this is not an opportunity for discussion.
Okay, well, you should be honest with yourself. I've been there 23 years in that area. Those are ridiculous. You shouldn't even think about it.
The matter is before the council. Counsel Tran.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to respond to the mayor's comment, I know as a counselor, I'm wise enough to make a decision, but the problem I have with this presentation tonight is that...
Counsel Joseph.
It doesn't have...
As a point of order, if we're going to have a discussion, we need to have a motion to discuss.
A motion on the floor.
Counselor, this is, this is the time where the councilors have an opportunity to make comments.
That was during the hearing. Now you can make a motion to approve or not approve, and then you can make your comments.
That was a public hearing. That's called a public opportunity to speak.
That's closed.
When the hearing is closed, the councilors have an opportunity to make comments before the motion is made.
To the motion.
And I was...
Counsel, Counsel Joseph is correct. I'll be sure to give you the floor if there is a motion on the table.
Make a motion to pass 106-2016.
I have a motion and second to approve 10616, speaking to the motion. Counsel Tran.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like I said, I have a really hard time comprehending and accepting the presentation tonight because it doesn't have the answers to questions such as, how are they going to make improvement to Westminster Hill Road? What are the impact on the water? What traffic study are they going to do? And most important of all, are they going to adjust the disturbance in quality to the well, to the wells that are in that area? They couldn't answer any of these questions. This is not just a step. It's a major step for them to move forward. And for us to do so, questions need to be answered. Data needs to be provided to us to make that decision. Now, I, I also have a hard time voting down this proposal until I get those, those questions answered. I would entertain a motion to hold this, but since there's a motion to pass it already, I can't entertain that motion. I'm hearing that this is a commercial growth. We need to accept it, regardless of the questions are not answered. That's not how I operate. That's not how I do business. I need the data. I need questions to be answered for me to make a decision. And that's how I stand. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Dina Tally.
Can I make one request before you vote? Would you ask people to put up their hands, all of them that are against this project?
Sir, I think the hearing is closed. The time for public comment is over. Counsel Dina Tally, you have the floor.
Okay. I thought this was a democracy where majority rules. You guys are in minority.
Counsel Dina Tally, the floor is yours.
One of the things wrong with this city, the perception is, we don't want business here. I hear it all the time. We have a tax base that's almost 80% houses. That is why people's bills skyrocket every year. With added economic development, and no one has said this is going to cure our ills, but it is a signal to other communities that we are a place for investment. Most residents, obviously, in the non-affected areas have contacted me overwhelmingly for this. Unfortunately, when anything impacts a neighborhood, it is a microcosm of 42,000 people. And I look at the city at large. Our valuations are 78% homes. We're taking a property that is worth $500,000 and can potentially be $8 million. That $8 million valuation adds $7.5 million to our tax base on the commercial side. That means 7.5 million will leave the home side, drawing down that percentage. I'm getting into the weeds here, but I'm trying to explain where I'm coming from with this, because it's hard for me, too, to accept this. But at the same time, we, we do not need more houses in this city. We don't. And I, in supporting this, am not saying to heck with all the concerns here tonight, because we just went through chapter and verse how much this is going to be going through the vetting process. So someone mentioned about the tax, someone called me yesterday and said, well, you're just doing this for the money. You're doing this for the tax revenue. It's a, it's a, it's $100,000, $200,000 increase in tax. No, I'm doing it for the valuation. I'm doing it to try to make inroads into a major issue that residents call me about every week, and that is their taxes are too high. So I, I, I am, I will support this. I will be a hypocrite if I don't. I've been saying for years, why don't we ever get development in this city? And forget the homeowners, too. Forget, set that aside, the businesses in this city are getting squeezed, too. Right now, we charge our businesses $5 more per $1,000 valuation of their taxes than residents. So not only do we have an 18% commercial base in this city, which is why residents pay so much money at the property tax level, the business side of it is paying even more. And we've got unitil, we've got no access to the highway, we've got a lot of cards stacked against us. So no one's under any illusions this is going to solve all our problems, but it's a $10 million investment in our city that will draw many people to the region in an area that's already being primed for development through the train station and Great Wolf and what have you. So I believe that this will be a betterment to the city at large, to all taxpayers, to all businesses currently in the city, because the current status quo has failed everybody. That's why people pay more and they get less. There's nothing on the other side of the ledger to take money from them. So I won't stand by and vote for something that'll ensure, at a minimum, higher taxes, stagnant valuations across the city, and no, not enough services. Thank you.
Counsel Beazall.
Thank you. In my ward, we've had some tough development. I know when they wanted to develop the orchards, residents were very, very upset and they were concerned, and I went to the hearings with them, and I haven't heard anything since they started the development. So I think if everyone works together on development, I think it's a good thing. Tonight, what we're doing is, when we're, we're trying to ask questions about, to this developer, and we haven't even said to him, we haven't even said we're going to allow this to happen. That's what we're supposed to be voting on tonight, is whether we're going to give this person a chance, a chance, to do business in Fitchburg. He still has to go through all of the processes. Along the way, somebody might make it ridiculous for him, and he might say, this is too expensive, I'm not going to do the project. But he's willing to do traffic study, he's willing to look at the infrastructure, he's willing to do a lot of things in that area, and he's willing to invest a lot of money in studies, but he can't do anything unless we say we're going to give him a chance. I went to the meetings, planning board, and other meetings when these developments were taking place to monitor the progress. There is no doubt in my mind that Counselor Caddy will be at these meetings to make sure this project gets done correctly. There's no doubt in my mind, I have faith in every commission that we have in this city, that they are going to do the right thing for the city. But none of that takes places if we just don't say, we're going to take a chance and go ahead and do this. So I am going to be voting in favor of this. I'm going to give this plan a chance. It may or may not prove to, to be there, but at least we're giving somebody a chance to do something. Thank you.
Counsel Joseph.
I guess the thing that bothers me the most about this, and I'm sorry if everybody can't hear me, I'm just not a loud person. I'm not going to shout for you. My, my major concern here is the fact that we, this, it doesn't help, this is just for at home, it doesn't help you in the room. My major concern here is the fact that we're taking away people's property rights, okay? These people are living in a rural residential area, and we want to make it a commercial...
These people are living in a rural residential area, and we want to make it a commercial area. That's a fundamental right that we're taking away from their property, why they bought their property where they did. Okay? When we rezoned some industrial to commercial in West Fitchburg, it made sense. Okay? You're along the major route. You already have no industrial people going into that area, but you can have some commercial area, which would service the people that are in that area, to be able to have more opportunities for grocery stores, things that would benefit them, bookstores, whatever. So my concern here is that we haven't, when we normally, when we do a zoning change, it can take years with studies. Okay? And we're proposing a major zoning change to a neighborhood without any kind of study to say that this is a good idea or a bad idea for the city of Fitchburg. We're proposing a zoning overlay for a developer, as opposed to proposing a zoning overlay for the city. So I guess my main concern is that, I know that all of the things will be done properly if that project goes forward. The planning board will do it properly, and the conservation will do it properly. My concern isn't that. My concern is the fundamental right, did we look at whether or not we, as Fitchburg, want to take away some of our rural residential property and make it commercial? And again, it's the same thing that these folks have said. We have an industrial park up there that the city of Fitchburg has made a commitment to, to be an industrial park, and we're going to put 10,000 cars through their industrial park. What's that mean to the 200 guys that are driving the big trucks with the asphalt in the back and all that other stuff? How are they going to be able to maneuver around 10,000 additional cars a day? What impact is it going to have to the water, the sewer? All of those things, I know that they're going to be vetted through the planning department, but I think when we do a zoning change, we need to do a zoning commission to do a zoning change. And I know that the zoning board has voted against rezoning, that they've only voted to have an overlay district. So basically, it's kind of skirts the issue of doing a complete analysis from the city side of whether or not we should rezone that area. Because we're basically putting an overlay in there to help a gentleman that probably doesn't want to go out and build 500 homes. So I guess, as a city, we should be looking at whether or not this is the right thing for us to do before we go off and do it from the city side. That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking that we pass it tonight. I'm asking that we hold it and get some more information on a zoning hearing, as opposed to a hearing on the development. So that's where I would go. I would like to see a zoning hearing and not an overlay hearing. Because basically, if we put in an overlay, we're basically rezoned.
Take a motion, Counselors.
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hate to come off a little negative on counselors, but some of the counselors that are talking in a negative fashion have been on other boards and should know the process. Some were on the council when zoning was changed. We had a division 2020. It lasted for about five years. I don't want to wait five years for more. Approximately that time, in the same, pretty close to the same neighborhood, many of the same residents were opposed to an industrial park. Fitchburg lost the industrial park by a vote of seven to four. It would have passed if it was eight to three. It was there. After that, those houses on Victoria Lane were built. That is, in my opinion, improper zoning, but it was Residence A. You're not supposed to have the nice houses next to an industrial park. But it was done by Vision 2020, and the city council passed it in 2000. So now we're talking, the council's job is not to be the planner. People on the council that have been on the planning board before should know that it's not our job. Our job is to give opportunity. Now, I understand the defense of having residence, residential neighborhood and changing the zoning is an overlay. The overlay districts, variances, whether they come from the zoning board or special permits, it's a reason to give someone an opportunity. Everybody's not going to be pleased. If you take a rough count, there's 50 people, maybe 60 people, that are opposed right now that are here. There's 40,000 residents. There's 10,000 taxpayers. 10,000 taxpayers. Why should a small group of people, each time there's a proposal, come and prevent progress in Fitchburg? We make votes. We do our homework. Our job is not to check the wells, to check the topography, to check the wetlands. We have boards to do that. That's what they specialize in. It's not the council's job, as the mayor said and some of the other experts. All those hoops, all those specialized fields, the person that gave the presentation is not qualified to answer, because they have to get all specialists to answer these. The mayor is on board. I mean, he just didn't, it just didn't happen. I asked, I had a very interesting conversation last week with, I'm sure the person's here wants to tell me who he is, but we had an interesting discussion. I was on the zoning board for five years. I was on the city council for eight years. I've been on the redevelopment authority. It's just to say, I've been around a long time, looking, and I said, "What's happened in the last 30 years in Fitchburg?" You know, the biggest thing we've had is Great Wolf. Great Wolf, people don't know. Two years ago, it brought in $47,000 in room tax. Last year, it brought $937,000 in room tax. We need development. Unitil used to be the highest taxpayer in Fitchburg. Great Wolf is now the highest taxpayer in Fitchburg, not including the room tax. I had to give the individual that he was telling me how much taxes he pays, or about how much money he's put into his house, and I said, "Do you know where I live?" He said, "Yes, I do." I said, "I live across the street from a school. I have cars that come back and forth every day. I have buses that come back and forth every day. I have trucks, delivery trucks, trailer trucks, rubbish trucks, every day. Near, on the other side, I have the hospital. I live in a, it's a nice neighborhood. I hear sirens. I hear police sirens, trucks rattling around." I mean, we live in a city. It's not perfect, and it's not going to stay the same. The amount of tax revenue, as the mayor had mentioned, approximately $250,000. If you got that much taxes from the homes, the residents, the children that live would cost more money for school services, not counting fire, police or anything else. I have been doing this so long, it's so frustrating to be in Fitchburg, to watch the negativity. Anyone that comes up with a good idea, it's no good. I want Fitchburg to progress. That's the only reason I'm continuing my endeavor. But it's up to the council. It's only giving opportunity. We don't do the rest of the screening. Thank you.
Just to add, once again, we're not approving 10 soccer fields tonight. Not approving a single soccer field tonight. Not approving a, if this were to fall through and someone wanted to put a zip line up, we're not approving that either. We're merely allowing the next step and the numerous, perhaps hundreds of other questions that need to be answered, to be answered next. And I have to trust that the due diligence by our city's boards and commissions will be done by our mayor's administration. I see members of the planning board who are here tonight, who have sat through hundreds of hours of similar kind of petitions before, to make sure that due diligence is done and that every i is dotted and every t crossed. Similarly, with the conservation commission, who's solely focused on making sure that environmental impact is minimized at all costs and that it's protected and conserved at every level. Issues about wells, lighting, parking, water, wastewater, environmental, just to name a few. We're going to have to put these through the toughest level of scrutiny for now, and I'm sure in the months or potentially years ahead. This is not going to be an easy process, and many of you brought valid concerns and arguments to the table that answers have to be brought to the table for. This is merely allowing those questions to be answered. If at any point, I think, any of us counselors have legitimate concerns that are not answered by these boards, commissions, or by these contractors, consultants or owners, we're not going to pass it. This is simply allowing the next step and these questions to be answered. So with that, I appreciate everyone being here this evening.
Did you entertain a procedural question?
Sir, at this point, the matter is before the floor for counselors only. There's a motion on the table. Counselor Caddy.
I'm in a little different position than the rest of you sitting in this room. I represent this ward. I know most of the people there. I grew up with some of them, and that area of the city was my starting ground. So when I, I'm like Counselor Joseph. This is the loudest I can get. That's where I used to hang out when I was a kid. And my job here tonight is to represent my ward. So I'm sorry I can't be with you people tonight that are voting for it, but I, as a ward counselor, I'm responsible to represent the people in my ward. To the people in the room, if this were to pass tonight, I'm going to have many sleepless nights over this, I'm sure. I just went through it with the gas station up on Princeton Road and trying to mediate with the neighborhood. So if this were to move forward, I mean, there's planning board meetings, there's zoning board meetings, there's conservation meetings, there's meetings after meetings after meetings, phone calls. Everybody will have my email. Everybody will have my phone number. There'll be a lot of work to be done.
Thank you. Counselor Tran.
Just want to make a comment that I didn't hear any negativity tonight. I heard a lot of residents' concerns protecting their property rights and protecting their families, and that's what I heard, Mr. President. Thank you.
Move the question. I have a motion and second on the floor to adopt 106-2016. Speaking to the motion-
Just a question. Is it a six to regular majority vote?
It requires eight total votes, two-thirds majority. I have a motion and second on the floor. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Dina Tally.
Just have to get this in. No one insinuated that they're being negative. We're talking about the stigma throughout the city. I'll say it 50 times if I have to, that those, this is what makes this decision so hard for me, why I'm so passionate right now about it, because I feel bad about this. But at the same time, I represent 42,000 people. That is the negative stigma in this city that I was referencing. I want to make that clear. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor Tran.
Counselor, I wasn't referencing you. Counselor Donnelly said that he heard a lot of negativity tonight. That's what I was referring to. Thank you.
I heard a moved question earlier. All those in favor, counselors, please raise your hands. Keep them raised, please. All those opposed, keep them raised, please. To an opposition. The vote carries nine to two. Steve Marsden, President SM Development, Inc., to amend the Fitchburg zoning ordinance by amending 181.313 Table of Use Regulation by striking the letter N in the line C19 and inserting in its place PB, and to amend 181.321 by adding 181.3217 Westminster Hill Road Commercial Recreational Planned Development Districts. Declare the hearing open. Good evening.
My name is Steve Marsden. I'd like to withdraw that petition.
Motion to withdraw 107.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition?
Mr. President, can we wait till the people leave so we can hear what's being said?
Counselor Boishman, we can do that. Thank you for the suggestion. Gentlemen, thank you for your patience. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? Sir? Gentlemen, thank you.
I didn't think I'd get a second bite at the apple, so keep it brief. No, I don't mean to belabor the point. I feel that there's, I'm sorry, Ian Catlow, 85, Victoria Lane, for the record. I feel that, you know, there's a lot of valid points that have been made here tonight. As much as it pains me to agree at all with Counselor Dina Tally's points, he's got some good points that he made. I agree. The city needs money. I get it. But, you know, this should be a zoning exercise. There was no need to hold this vote tonight, either of these votes. I'd also add that a number of residents were preparing a petition under Chapter 40A, Section 5S, which would have required a three-quarters majority vote on this. Not that it would have made a difference in retrospect, but I'd like the clerk to confirm or deny whether she received any such application prior to the meeting. Okay? That's no. I don't know. All I can say is, working in other communities, this process usually goes through an extensive charrette, where both sides are aired in detail, and I don't think that really happened tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll just make comments before allowing others to speak in opposition, that the petitioners asked for this to be given leave to withdraw, so the petitioners are asking for this to be dismissed and not acted upon. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none, declare the hearing closed. Counselors, the matter is before you.
Will we be giving leave to withdraw?
I have a motion and second, give 107-2016 leave to withdraw. Speaking to the motion-
I'd make a comment because it eluded me in the first one. I came to this meeting tonight not to ask any questions, but I was hoping, and I had my fingers crossed, that they were able to answer all the questions. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. Thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
When this petition that we, it's in front of us, if we don't change this tonight, will it make a difference? Could we put this on hold, this one here?
Counselor, the petitioner is asking for it to be given leave to withdraw.
Oh, all right. All right. Thanks.
Debate motion.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I really hope the people who are watching this at home are listening, because I don't know how many more times we can say that this isn't a done deal. In order for the questions to be answered and the studies to go forward, we needed to do this, or else he wasn't going to do it. I get accused sometimes of repeating myself a lot, but apparently, stuff doesn't sink in here. It just, you can't answer the questions unless you give the developer the opportunity to go get them. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to give 107-2016 leave to withdraw. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is given leave to withdraw. Orders?
Motion for suspension on 193-2016. Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 193-2016. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Move 193-16 be adopted. Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt 193-2016. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Is unanimous, the motion carries?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. Counselors, just very briefly, after a, certainly a tense and topicful evening, I'd just like to take the quick opportunity to thank those who made Civic Days possible over these past two weeks, in particular, certainly the block party and the parade this past weekend. We had thousands and potentially tens of thousands come to our city. We truly were a destination city this past weekend. It's a weekend we should all be proud of. Certainly, we owe our thanks and I think gratitude to A.J. Terigne, Chief of Staff, and Diane Burnett, who spent countless hours. There's hundreds of other volunteers who made tremendous efforts throughout the weekend. And again, I think our, and financial support from our generous sponsors, certainly among them. So it was a tremendous weekend. I think we should be proud as a city and excited for what next year- I think we should be proud as a city and excited for what next year has to bring. So thanks to all those involved. Counselor Green.
I would just like to add that also to the support and countless hours that FATV did to cover that event. Again, they are one of our partners in moving Fitchburg forward, so I just wanted to acknowledge that as well. Thank you.
I would also like to welcome Counselor Jeff Bean back. It was certainly wonderful to have you join us back.
I'll save my speech for later, but no, no. Thank you.
Counselor Beazall.
And just to echo on, Counselor Green said, DPW, the fire, the police, this really was a community effort, a city effort, to get Civic Days done, and these are the things that really we should be proud of. So, kudos to everyone.
I have a motion and second on the floor to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, counselors.[1743.15]